They left. They were here for that one. How is that news?
I probably haven't missed more than a half a dozen meetings in the last twelve years.
They didn't realize it was real.
Yeah, there's always those calls.
But uh?
They didn't realize it was real news.
Yeah, well, the part I thought would be controversial wasn't.
How are you?
Yep.
She's one of the coolest.
I um, I attend less of those things than I did then by planning committees. Never cross anyone that works at home and stuff. I used to, I don't do that anymore.
Hey, thanks for coming to the truth the other night. Thanks for telling the truth the other night.
John said we've got all these issues to follow, but they're gonna go.
direction, acoustic were a little difficult to get to here.
Yeah.
But it's very nice, very open.
Who's uh, civil service seat is coming up? I do. Stand behind a big podium. What things up there yesterday? That's all our Sunday school classrooms.
I'd like to call the Maumell City Council meeting to order. The fir- uh, first I need to let you know that Alderman Anderson and Alderman Kelly will not be here tonight. Uh, they had other business that they had to attend to. I know one of them was out of town. And then also at this time, the uh, invocation and pledge of allegiance is gonna be led by Alderman Vaporsen. If you'd all please rise.
Let's pray, Heavenly Father, we love you, thank you for a beautiful day and for the strength that you provided for us to be here, the health. And we take many things for granted. And uh, thank you that your hand is upon us and uh, that uh, we know how much you love us. Uh, Lord, our hearts and thoughts with many of our citizens here who are hurting and grieving over lost loved ones and, and different illnesses. We're so thankful that you're a mighty big God and you know all of us by name and you know our situations. And you ask us to bring our needs to you, not just so that we can have someone to talk to. You're not the Santa Claus in the sky, but you want a relationship with us. May we focus on that. Pray for our two aldermen that are gone, that you'd bless and protect them, give them safety for our servicemen and women overseas and here. That you would protect them and thank you for their willingness to provide our freedoms for us. Blessed as we make decisions this evening, help it to do it for the benefit of our citizens, our community. Thank you for our leadership. May we honor you with what we say and what we do. We'll thank you forward in Jesus's name. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business is the approval of the minutes from the March twentieth regular meeting. You have a copy of those minutes in your packages.
Motion to approve, second?
Second.
We have motion and second to approve the March twentieth meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment and we have several public comment cards here tonight. I have two of them that are regarding the tree board. So we have a, a comment card from Ms. Dinah Nash and Mr. Jim Rule. And so at this time, Ms. Nash, Mr. Rule, if y'all wanna come forward or the entire tree board, however y'all wanna do that.
I'm gonna introduce the board.
Okay.
So you all stand uh, in your places or whatever you'd like to do. Okay, uh, let me introduce past president Jim Rule. And Barbara Baker, our new member, who is our secretary. Pete Roush, who's the urban, of the urban arborist for the board and for the city. And um, I am the most recent addition of the tree board presidency. And so I'm happy to be here and what we're doing tonight is a very quick overview of the history of the tree board. I promise to keep this to five minutes. And um, Pete Roush just made it in from uh, a, a big traffic jam on four thirty. So we're glad he can uh, start with our history, then we're gonna talk a little bit about what we're trying to do now. And wrap it up by giving you, giving the city in the person of Mike Watson, uh, a, a glass desk trophy from the Arbor Day Foundation, which commemorates, is commemorating our ten years as a tree city. So that's why we're here tonight. So thank you all for making possible the budget that makes possible for us to uh, plant some trees in the parks and uh, keep Maumell beautiful. Thank you. So Pete?
Okay, thanks Dinah. And I am so glad to be here. And I guess the rest of our tree board members are stuck behind me someplace in, in traffic. But uh, just a quick history on the tree board. We started um, uh, it is our ten year anniversary. We started in two thousand and seven. Uh, we had a group of very active, uh, very enthusiastic volunteers that joined uh, to have uh, Maumell be certified as a Tree City USA. We meet, uh, we met the four criteria required by Arbor Day Foundation. We developed a tree board. Uh, with the help of Jim Neri, we were able to draft and pass a tree ordinance dealing with the care and planting of trees on public grounds and within the city parks. Um, we had a expenditure of at least two dollars per capita for population going toward trees. And that includes everything from tree planting, pruning, uh, education and the work that uh, the Parks Department and Planning and Public Works has, has done to help us out. And uh, with that, uh, becoming a Tree City USA, we were able to have our first Arbor Day celebration. And I think the key line of that uh, was addressed as Maumell starts where the trees begin. With all development up and down the boulevard, that's kind of become our motto also. But we were able to get grants through the Forestry Commission to plant some trees along the boulevard there at South Odom. We were able to buy some pruning tools to do educational workshops, some educational materials to, to hand out to the public. And we've carried on uh, doing that for the last ten years. So Dinah, you're welcome to come back up.
Thank you. Jim, would you like to tell about the memorial tree? Real quick?
Jim Rule, former chairman of the board, tree board. Um, one of our great accomplishments this past year, and the first time the tree board, I think, has done this, is designate a heritage tree in the park by the river. If you haven't been down to see it, it's wonderful. It was timely in that uh, the, the kind of tree was called a slippery elm. And uh, we did the dedication in the end of October, just before one of the more slippery elections took place in our country, if one can call it that. I wanna urge you, as a past tree board member, um, as a present tree board member, but a, a past president, that we want to be more than just window dressing for the city of Maumell. We want your cooperation in granting us more money to prac- to plant more trees and to focus on specific areas where trees would augment the atmosphere and the good health of the city of Maumell. So carry on. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rule.
So I just wanted to add something to what Jim said. Um, that is that real estate values go up in communities that remember to plant trees and save some of the big ones. So um, I know we're, we're all interested in, in having our property values go up and in having people who drive through Maumell wanna stay there. So um, that's what happened to me several years ago. So I've been here about four years. And um, honestly, uh, we were looking for trees. We were looking for a place that looked forested and looked neat and tidy. And um, we, we've just been really happy here. So um, Mayor Watson, I'd like to give you this wonderful trophy for your desk or wherever in City Hall you would like to put that.
Right here.
On picture, okay? Alright.
Thank you very much.
And lapel pins, sir?
Okay, alright.
For wherever you would care to wear that.
Okay, alright, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for, and again, thank you to the board for the budget that we get through the Parks and Rec uh, department for the, the little things that we can do. And we're interested in more education and we're interested in hearing from people in the community as to where they would like us to go to talk to people about planting trees, selecting trees, um, taking care of trees. And um, so thank you very much for the opportunity to come up here tonight.
Well, thank you very much for y'all diligence in protecting our trees in Maumell and for educating our public. I mean, you know, the, we all don't appreciate trees till they're gone. And so, uh, it's one of those things. So uh, let's uh, keep up the good work that y'all been doing for the past ten years and we look forward to ten more years at least.
Well, thank you. We're about to decorate the sign, the new Willistee Park sign.
Right.
It's about to have some cool things around it.
Okay.
And uh, Pete chose a cherry tree, one's on cherry to go behind it and some landscaping plants. And uh, we're not a big deal, but we are, we are a proud small board, creating a little more beauty around here. So thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Oh, before y'all leave, Alderman Holt, I think, has a, a comment before y'all leave. Alderman Holt?
Oh, well, alright. You've got me off guard. In a courtroom, I, if you bring up the subject somebody else had ta- opportunity to explore it, you said the slippery um, tree and the slippery election, is that right? Was that Bill Clinton or was that Donald Trump?
It would've been Hillary.
And you don't have to reply.
There's been more than one slippery election in our history.
Yes, sir, okay. That was my comment.
At least the results were more, I think, uh, less challenged in the case of President Clinton.
Right, so everybody can just look at it as in their own way.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, on the slippery elm, I just wanted to tell everybody, if you go to Park on the River and go down to where the boat launch is, we have a new fence across that fences in a large flat area where weddings are held. The slippery elm is approximately in the middle of that big flat area, 'cause I went out and looked at it. It's pretty neat.
There's a big sign, a big boulder with a bronze sign on it.
And we wanna invite everybody to Arbor Day in the first weekend of November. And um, that's when we do a lot of our education for the community, but we're gonna also be involved in Earth Day down at the Community Center. There's a focus on youth thing coming up between the Chamber and the Lions Club and we're gonna be involved in that. And um, we're, as I said, eager to educate any group that you are a part of that you would like to program for.
Thank you to the tree board and, and everything they do. I have another public comment card and it's from Mr. Shane Parker. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Shane Parker, seven zero Norfolk Drive. Uh, the reason I'm here tonight is uh, in two thousand and seven, my wife and I purchased a lot on Norfolk Drive. And uh, we subsequently applied for a permit and, and received eventually a permit from the Corps of Engineers for putting in a boat dock and riprap on that lot on Norfolk Drive. I then started clearing a couple of trees at a time, just taking them down uh, at, as I had time to do that. And I was subsequently stopped by Maumell code enforcement, uh, which said I needed a permit in order to take those trees down.
Yeah, it's ringing back a little bit, we're gonna try to turn it down.
That's alright, I'll move back. Um, so for years, I've, I've seen other lots that have been cleared here in Maumell. And uh, and it's just something that's, you know, I've thought about for years. And then uh, earlier this year, or a month or so ago, I'm not sure when it occurred, I noticed it earlier this year. Another lot on Norfolk was cleared and a for sale sign was put on it. Which like these other lots that have been cleared, a for sale sign tells me that they probably don't have a building permit. So I contacted Mr. Morley and uh, regarding any changes to the code. I wanted to know if the code had changed, uh, because obviously there's other lots that have been cleared. And uh, he ended up explaining to me that the code had not been changed and the lot owners were being cited. So, uh, or had been cited. I, I don't know if it was a result of my questioning him. So my purpose here tonight is request that the city council review section ninety dash one twenty-two of the Maumell Municipal Code, which requires a building permit prior to anyone removing a live tree from a vacant lot. I further request that after reviewing uh, section ninety dash one twenty-two, that the regulation be revised to permit private owners of vacant lots who have purchased it for the personal use to be uh, to be allowed to remove trees without first acquiring a building permit from the city. This regulation is overly restrictive on private lot owners and has resulted in administrative action or fines against unsuspecting citizens. I would note that I'm not requesting that the city make any changes to the ordinance that affects developers, builders, or persons that are acting as a for-profit business. And again, I'll just say it's Maumell Municipal, Municipal Code, section ninety dash one twenty-two. If anybody wants me to read it, I've got a copy of it. I would also note that the code uh, penalty is a hundred to five hundred dollars per tree. So recently I've had several conversations with the, the city's director of building code enforcement and permits, Mr. Morley. It's my understanding that the main purpose for this municipal code is because of the potential erosion that may possibly occur if trees and other vegetation are removed from an undeveloped lot. I also understand that the city has at least one previous experience with a builder, a developer, or a contractor that cleared a lot, which resulted in some drainage issues. I would say to you that while trees may reduce the rate of soil erosion, trees will not stop or negate soil erosion when an underlying drainage system uh, problem is the cause. Uh, further, the effects from the drainage of any given lot is independent to that lot. And I would expect that only a fraction of the privately owned lots in Maumell may present this problem. It's my opinion that most private owners of undeveloped lots purchase them for the purpose of building a future home or as an investment. Most private lot owners must pursue financial constru- and construction assistance to successfully build a home because so many complicated events must occur in a very short period of time. This can be very difficult for the average citizen to accomplish. Most private lot owners do not have the pi- uh, personal financial assets to develop a lot and build a home simult- simultaneously. Therefore, this regulation combines those unwarranted, combines those events and creates an unwarranted burden. Also, I believe that most people purchasing an undeveloped lot do so with the expectation that they can develop the lot in a manner and time of their choosing within the bounds of normal city regulations. No person that I've spoken with from Maumell or elsewhere have been aware of any such regulation, nor have I met anyone that agreed with it, other than Mr. Morley. I have searched through Little Rock, North Little Rock, and Pulaski County Municipal Codes and cannot find an equivalent or similar regulation that restricts private owners from removing trees from undeveloped lots. And yet, these communities share the same geographical and terrain issues as well as the state and county regulations. However, I would note that I have found antithetical regulations in both North Little Rock and Little Rock Municipal Codes concerning lot owners. Not that I'm asking you to make me clear it. Furthermore, removing trees and excessive vegetation from undeveloped lots would provide a benefit to the welfare, health, and safety of the surrounding community by reducing havens for rodents, snakes, and other small animals. Undeveloped wooded lots also tend to attract adventurous young children. I would further point out that this would apply to every undeveloped lot, while Mr. Morley's drainage issue justification for the regulation only applies to the, a fraction of the undeveloped lots. Finally, I would repeat that this regulation presents an undue burden on the citizens of Maumell. This is a burden that does not appear to be placed on the surrounding communities of Maumell and I suspect that most other communities in this country. However, modifying this regulation would likely encourage persons considering the purchase of an undeveloped lot, while current regulations would definitely discourage me from purchasing another lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, for your comments.
Is there anything? Any questions?
Alderman Mosley?
I uh, I, I noticed the email back and forth and that sort of thing. And I've, I've looked through the code book and uh, looked at all this. And this is a, I, I think you've raised an interesting, an interesting question. What I, what I found was I, I'm aware that we had a developer that came in back in the late eighties that did a lot of clear cutting of what is now referred to as the Track D and, and uh, or all the developments going on now with the fast food restaurants and things like that. Uh, that was clear cut and I, and at the time, I think, these regulations were actually put in place as a result of that to try to protect uh, our, our trees from being uh, clear cut. And uh, I did go and looked at the regulations and I saw the regulation that you, you quoted in your emails and so on. And it uh, uh, it, it, it does, it does address a, an improved lot, saying you cannot remove a tree. And I was looking for the same wording for undeveloped lots or undeveloped properties or tracks. Uh, because I assumed that we were mainly trying to keep just clear cutting of undeveloped land. And I didn't find the same thing. Um, uh, it talks about a harvesting plan, as long as a harvesting plan's put in place and that sort of thing. Uh, it doesn't, doesn't forbid. So one of the things I'm worried about is if we're preventing a, a resident who owns a private lot from cutting a tree, are we unfairly singling them out over, say, a developer who apparently could clear a single tree off, off his lot? In a perfect world, I, I really wouldn't wanna cut any tree until my house is ready to be developed or something like that. But it's, it's uh, not a perfect world and, and I think we need to have regulations and, and code that's, that's fair for everybody. In other words, equal treatment under the law and that sort of thing. So uh, I, I, and, and, and there's always a question too, is are we interfering with a private property owner's ability to uh, do what they want to with their own, own property? You know, is, is denying them the ability to cut a tree uh, on their property, is that denying them a right that they have? So I guess the question does come about, is, is this even constitutional to prevent this? Another question I would have too, is I know she pointed out that other municipalities do not have the same prohibition. I'd be interested to know if our city attorney or the mayor or anybody knows whether, whether this, this type of thing is commonplace or if we're unique in all this.
I'm not gonna speak for another community. I don't check other communities' regulations on a regular basis. I will say that you're talking about constitutionality. I mean, if you allow, as Mr. Parker defined, a private owners versus developers, the private owners are owners of a lot, just like there are other people. So now you're, you're making different rules for different people. So, and, and one of the statements Mr. Parker made was buy it for an investment. Then they're making a profit if they're buying it for an investment to try to sell later. So how's that any different than the developer that is supposedly the one behind it? But, you know, there's been other cases besides the land that you referenced on Track D. There's several lots that were cleared within subdivisions. And you, it does not prevent you from clearing underbrush? You can take down underbrush, you can.
No, sir.
Yes, you can.
Well, do you want me to read you the, the code?
You can, but you can clear underbrush. It's been done on a regular basis, so.
I'm just, I'm just, I, I didn't read the code 'cause I didn't wanna waste your time, but it says right in there, you can't remove any vegetation.
Well, okay, then, then that's what it says, but it, underbrush has been removed, so.
Well, sir, I, I would, I would just point out that uh, you make the point about me segmenting developers, contractors, and builders. But the law is full of codes, municipal codes, that divide the two. Because business, that's why you have zoning, because businesses do things differently. People that are in a for-profit business have requirements to do things that private citizens don't a lot of times. And that's why those, that's why we have that delineation in the law, many times, for, for commercial entities.
But we're talking about residential zoning, is what we're talking about.
That's correct. And we're talking about a private owner of a lot versus a company coming in and purchasing a bunch of lots or a single lot and, and, and doing it as a for-profit business. I think there's a big difference there.
I disagree with that, but we'll just have to disagree, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I just, um, again, I would say the same standard in being applied to the developers as there are the residential owner of a, of a lot, um, as far as I can tell and, and.
Well, I think it's because they're platted lots. That's the differentiation.
I would, I would appreciate if, if, could we get a, could, could I ask you for a legal opinion as to whether denying a property owner the right to clear a tree is in violation of his uh, rights to maintain his property? And I don't really know how to phrase that, but.
You may. Um, I can give you a brief overview. So anytime we restrict what someone does, we're essentially restricting something that up until the restriction, they were able to do, unless it's in violation of some other law. So every time we uh, require that grass be cut to a certain length or that uh, there be a driveway put in place, we're doing those same sort of restrictions. I think there is a policy determination that the council has made in the past and, and can revisit if y'all are thinking of amending this, as to whether or not that's the type of thing the council wants to restrict. But I don't, I can't see any legal issue with it. Uh, I wanted to read really quickly just section nine dash one twenty-two that Mr. Parker referred to. It says, "No live tree on any vacant improved subdivision lot or tract may be cut and or removed until a building permit has either, has been either applied for or issued for the construction of the primary building." And then, and then it provides a provision for removing diseased, dead, or dying trees. Uh, and again, so for that, we're talking about a vacant improved subdivision lot or tract. If it's not an improved subdivision lot or tract, then it goes to a timber management plan. So undeveloped property has a timber management plan that is fairly comprehensive and that I won't read, but it, it requires a good, I mean, it's a full-on pla- plan uh, to describe it. But, so I just wanted to let you know that the two there, and, and our code does not treat it differently whether it's owned by the developer or owned by a private individual. Uh, it, it treats it based on whether or not it's developed uh, in an improved subdivision or whether it's just undeveloped lot. And so it doesn't make reference to who's owning it and for what purpose they're owning it currently, as it's, as it's written right now.
I think I know which uh, lot might've been cited also for uh, clearing of trees. Uh, it's also down there on Norfolk, I believe. And uh, it's an interesting situation. There's a house there. Uh, and then there's, there's space on either side. It looks like maybe it was a, somebody purchased two or three lots when they built their house. Uh, if they're being cited for removing a tree and they've got a house on their property, you know, that, that also lends the thing, are they being, can they not, if they've got a house on their property?
So this isn't dealing with uh, trees that are on a lot that uh, has a building on it already and, and therefore has been issued a building permit. Uh, and of course, they've applied for it, presumably, you know, that or the house predates uh, the formation of the city and the permitting process. Uh, but two touching lots are not treated as the same property. So even if one person buys two lots, they put a, a home on one lot and then the other lot, maybe they wanna keep it for view or for poss- to keep neighbors away, for whatever reason they buy that. Those are treated as two different properties. And that, that comes into effect in a lot of different ways, whether it's accessory structure, uh, structures through a shed out in the, you know, that's kind of hidden behind trees, or whether it's something like this that you're talking about, the trees there. So we're not prohibiting people from taking down a tree on their. So, we're not prohibiting people from taking down a tree on their lot that has the home. It's when it's on a different lot.
What you're, what you're saying is they would have needed to maybe go through the planning process and combine all those lots into one single property, is that?
That, they could do that, and people have done that. So, for instance, some folks that wanted to fence in multiple lots have replatted that into one lot, and then we, from that point on, considered that one lot.
So, then, if they had bought it as one lot and cleared it, and then subdivided it, you're saying then that's okay for them to do? And yet, a person that purchases just a lot, not a house and a lot, and then doesn't subdivide it, cannot, has not provided that same distinction to, to remove trees?
I'm not quite sure. You're saying someone buys one lot?
Or, or let's say they, they bought three lots. They combined them into one, they cleared the other two, and then subdivided it again. What I'm saying is, then they would have the advantage of being able to clear their lots and not, you know, be in violation of the city code.
I think that might be accurate. As I'm seeing it, I think you're accurate there.
So, I, I would say that that's kind of, that's not fair treatment for, I mean, they're, they're buying it for the same reason, obviously, when they buy it. The lots are there. They probably had the intent to sell those lots when they, they purchased it, probably, because the, the lot's gone up for sale. So, and I don't know, maybe that's what they did. Maybe even though he said they're, they're being cited, maybe they purchased it all as one single lot and then subdivided it.
And in the individual case that I think you're talking about, because I spoke with Mr. Morley about that, the individual was cited. A lot of times, we don't work toward, you know, we're not trying to fine someone or get money, we're just trying to get compliance, but when you cut down trees, the, the trees are cut down. So, at that point, you're just left with the fine. And I, I don't know what the owner was doing there, but I, I do, it's my understanding that they have been cited, and I'm not sure if that predates or came after your contact with the city.
Yes, sir, and I was confused. It, it doesn't say about the vegetation, so I was wrong there, so.
At this, at this point, I, I'm not exactly sure, but I'd, I'd like to mull this over, and I'd like the council to kind of think about this, too, and, because I may, I may propose a change in this, and, but like I said, I want to think about it a little while, and if anybody's got any other thoughts, please, please share them. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mosley. Alderman Vapurzian?
Just had a quick question.
Hold on, Mr. Parker. I don't know if it.
It wasn't necessarily.
Okay, okay.
Thank you very much. I, I was just going to ask Mr. Nary with all of his background in the city, if, if he'd come upon this before, and how it was dealt with, if you recalled anything in that nature, or if this.
Jim Nary, Director of Planning and Zoning. Oh, yes.
Okay.
More than once.
Yes, sir.
The mayor had mentioned platted lots. That, that's a big difference. The way it would work in a, in a, your typical subdivision that comes before the planning commission, you submit a preliminary plat. Once all of the comments from staff in the planning commission are met on the preliminary plat, and you have an improved set of construction plans, then you're free to go ahead and clear, put in infrastructure, build the entire subdivision until it comes time for the final plat, the final inspection, signing of the final plat, the recording of it, and then the selling of lots. And then building permits can be issued. That's in a regular subdivision. Mammell is one of the few communities in central Arkansas that does not have what's called a grading permit, a permit that allows you to clear, grub, cut down trees before you've either submitted a final plat, or preliminary plat, or a site plan. City Attorney Norris and the mayor both made reference to something called a timber management plan, which City Attorney Norris is absolutely correct. It is extremely comprehensive and has to be done by somebody with some forestry experience. I've probably reviewed eight or nine of those in my career here at Mammell. It also involves the Public Works Director. But yes, this, this has come up before. Now, as the mayor, I'm, I'm not going to address what North Little Rock, Little Rock do, but I do keep up with what other cities do in their code, because it's the nature of my job. They have some similar things, though it might not be in quite the same format that we ask for, but they are somewhat similar. I heard something about, well, if, if you had three lots or two lots, and, and you bought those, and you replatted those into one lot. Yeah, that's a simple process, one that without any extenuating circumstances I can do at my desk in my office. Now, however, if you re-subdivided those lots, you're coming back to the planning commission for a review, because you just created a new subdivision. We have one of those on the agenda for April. A gentleman purchased two lots, they, or one lot, they've been one lot forever and ever. He decided he wanted to do what's called a simple lot split. Because you're creating multiple lots out of a single lot, that is something I cannot do at my desk, and that's coming before the planning commission. That happens occasionally.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Or, Mr. Nary, I'm sorry. I was thinking of Mr. Moore. Is there any other comments by the alderman on, Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, I think it's interesting that we are, we're talking about arbitrarily removing trees out of our city, and the first part of this meeting was dedicated to our tree board and, and the beauty of the trees in our city. And I think it wasn't just Track D. I believe part of the motivation, if I, if I had been told properly, part of the motivation for our, our regulations on clear cutting trees is to preserve the beauty of this city, too. So, and that's what I've been told. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Alderman Saunders. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. It's financial statement review, and that's done at the second meeting of each month. Next item is procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor to read all resolution ordinances by title only tonight.
So, I'll move second.
A motion and second to read all resolution ordinances by title only tonight. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, others in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Move on to unfinished business. We have the third reading, Board of Just Number Nine Twenty-Nine amending the master land use plan. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine twenty-nine, an ordinance amending the Mammell land use plan and map, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve ordinance nine twenty-nine.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance number nine twenty-nine. Is there any discussion on that motion? Alderman Mosley?
Yes, I just wanted to ask Mr. Nary if he's had any objections voiced in regard to this, this situation here, as far as natural trail rezoning and that sort of thing? Any, anything that's come up since we've been reading this?
Since you've been reading it, no, sir. During the planning commission process, of course, we put a sign out on the property so we can elicit some public comment. Memory serves me correctly, we actually had one, I believe, against, no name, no reason. I'm against it, click. That was it.
Okay, and I, I also sent out a alderman update here yesterday, asking if anybody had any objections to this, to let me know. I did not get any objections.
I do know in the landowner meeting of the folks in the natural trail area that you and I both attended, they all seemed quite pleased with this proposal.
Right, right, so that's all I've got?
Yes, sir.
Just want to check one last time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mosley. Is there any other discussion on ordinance number nine twenty-nine? If not, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Vapurzian?
Yes.
Alderman Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is the third reading, Board of Just Number Nine Thirty, amending the master zoning map. Madam City Clerk, will you read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine thirty, an ordinance amending the Mammell zoning map and for other purposes.
Motion to approve ordinance nine three zero.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance number nine thirty, amending the master zoning map. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Holt?
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Vapurzian?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes. Next item is the third reading of ordinance number nine thirty-one, amending a master land use plan. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine thirty-one, an ordinance amending the Mammell land use plan and map, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve ordinance nine thirty-one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number nine thirty-one. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not?
I, I do.
Okay.
My light didn't come on yet.
Oh, it is on, it is on, I'm sorry. It's right, it was right behind my microphone, I didn't see it.
That's all right. I wanted to say I, I have not had any objections from any of my constituents. I've, that's, that's my ward, and so I have no objections on that. I will be voting no, however, because I did promise my constituents when I was elected that I would never vote to rezone something to where it would facilitate apartments. I'm not trying to get anybody to join my no vote, because this doesn't add, from what I can tell, a single additional driver to Mammell Boulevard traffic, which was my, my objection back in the beginning, and it doesn't increase the capacity of apartments. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mosley. Is there any other discussion on ordinance number nine thirty-one? If not, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote.
Alderman Holt?
Yes.
Alderman Vapurzian?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
No. Motion passes, five to one. Or five to three, if you count the two that aren't here, but. Next item is third reading, Board of Just Number Nine Thirty-two, amending the master zoning map. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine thirty-two, an ordinance amending the Mammell zoning map and for other purposes.
Motion to approve ordinance nine thirty-two.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance number nine thirty-two. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote.
Alderman Mosley?
No.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Vapurzian?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is second reading of ordinance number nine thirty-three, amending ordinance nine ten. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Be it enacted, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine thirty-three, an ordinance amending section three of ordinance nine ten.
I, I do have.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes, I, I'm going to have to recuse myself again, because I, I do have some litigation with the city over this same subject, so I'll step out of the room for a second.
Okay, thank you. And this is the item that's on second reading. It was explained in detail. The one thing that I actually promised Alderman Vapurzian that I would get, and have not done it, is a copy of the map that was included in the last one that showed the specific ones.
It was in the packet?
It was in the packet.
Right.
Okay, all right. It was in the previous packet, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, it wasn't in this packet, but it was in the previous packet. So, all right, good. So, you did get a chance to see it then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other discussion on this one ordinance, we'll move on to the next ordinance, or next business. It's not an ordinance. Under new business, we have resolution number two thousand seventeen dash oh six, repealing resolution two thousand seventeen dash oh two and to grant a road easement. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, resolution twenty seventeen dash zero six, repealing resolution number twenty seventeen dash zero two and authorizing the mayor to grant an easement to build a road through approximately point three seven acres of real property owned by the City of Mammell.
Okay, backs about a month or so ago, the council approved resolution two thousand seventeen dash oh two, which allowed us to sell this same zero point three two acres to Dr. Haas and his development that is going in natural trail area out there. What we found out is that we purchased a right-of-way. We did not purchase a warranty, we didn't get a warranty deed, so we purchased right-of-way. So, we cannot sell Dr. Haas and his entity, which is White, White Oak Equestrian Center. We cannot sell him and provide him with clear title to that property. And so, in discussion with some attorneys and title people, the easiest thing to do would be to grant a road easement over the land that we have. Now, ultimately, the road will be dedicated to the City of Mammell anyway to maintain, but this would allow them to construct the roadway and put their utilities in and do everything to that manner in order to get access to the subdivision off of Count's massive extension. Alderman Mosley?
Who actually owns the land?
Well, the, that's the question. I, I think we own it. I think the City of Mammell owns it, but as a road right-of-way. Okay? Not as fee, simple title property. Basically, it can be used only for a road, is what it can be used for, the way we purchased it, because it said this land to be used for a road.
Yeah.
So, that's, that was written in the documents where they signed it, and so, we own it, but the problem when you do a road, or when a road is dedicated to the city, if it ever, if that road ever gets abandoned, similar to what we did right here on Lake Point Place, it reverts back to the adjoining property owners on each side. So, therefore, it's kind of one of those things that, yeah, the city owns it, we maintain it, we take care of it, but if it ever goes away, the road goes away, it reverts back to the previous owners or the adjoining landowners.
Who, who was that? Do you have?
Oh, it's Mr. M. Steve M. is the gentleman's name.
Okay.
And there was even the question of could we get a warranty deed from him and move forward? He is in South Korea.
He's the one in South Korea.
He's in South Korea, and it is very difficult to get warranty deeds.
I thought I recognized that name.
Yeah, they have to do a, have to schedule a meeting with the embassy to get the notary signed, and that can take three to four weeks out, and it is, there's also a translation barrier, because he speaks very limited English, and you go through a go-between here in the United States, so.
That's, that's all.
So, the simplest thing to do to allow Dr. Haas's project to go ahead and move forward is to grant a road easement. Now, the interesting thing is Dr. Haas is offering five thousand dollars for the road easement. He offered a six thousand dollars for the land, but the reason it's less this time is he's already incurred expenses with attorneys and title companies to get to this point. And so, we, I felt like it was fair that, that he reduced his offer amount, so that he wasn't out, the expenses he's already incurred and offer to purchase the land. And Dr. Haas is in the audit, so I guess he wants to say something.
That all sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, David Haas there, one twenty-eight South Shore Drive. Yeah, when we look at the title work on the order that is that, that what the city did, they have a right to the deed, it says we have the right to, to own the land, to, to, to purchase a property with, with the monies that were transitioned, but it did have the easement that was already transferred. So, you know, we'd have to, we just thought about just doing a deed and send it to Mr. M., but then that may take two months or whatever. Now, the, the big thing, other than the land there, I won't own the land, and then the other thing on the sign, it's about a hundred and nine feet, I think, from, from the existing road or right-of-way that's along through there. So, the only thing I would say is, would there be some consideration of being able to put a sign if, you know, closer than a hundred feet in a spot that wouldn't be in the right-of-way of any utilities or anything to be bothered, since I don't get to own the land? So, that would be something I might, you know, whether or not, hadn't talked to the mayor about it, but when looking at that, I was concerned about that, you know?
Well, when we do have provisions to put subdivision signs that are within the, the right-of-way.
Okay.
So, there, there are those provisions in order to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, so that should be, I mean, because, I mean, I, I can think of several right now, but, I mean, County Club of Arkansas, where their signs are, they're in the middle of the right-of-way, so, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So there's a provision for that.
Okay, well, that's good. We've been talking, I've been listening to all the sign problems we've been having here. So, I'd like to be able to put a sign there on, near enough the interest of people to know where it is, so.
Yes, sir.
And then, okay, and I guess the only other thing, and I guess it can be a moot point, but just whether to just send a deed to him and get it signed with us later, but I mean, but for the proof of the right-of-way now, but I don't know the assets of just lease on in that land. But I'll leave that up to the mayor. He brought that up. He just thought it would be a long time to get here. So, we'd like to try to get started on the project, so. All right, thank you.
Just trying to expedite everything. I felt this was the simplest thing to do, and the council just previously passed the other resolutions, so.
Motion to approve resolution number twenty seventeen dash oh six?
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve resolution two thousand seventeen dash oh six. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all of them in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is resolution two thousand seventeen dash oh seven, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative agreement. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, resolution number twenty seventeen dash zero seven. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Mammell to execute a cooperative agreement between the City of Mammell and Plaski County to apply for grant funding through the Arkansas Natural Resource Commission to extend sewer from the Mammell area to the Mammell, the Morgan community.
Is there any discussion on resolution two thousand seventeen dash oh seven? Alderman Holt?
As I discussed while I go with you in the office, Mr. Mayor, on the email that we received and a little bit, some misunderstanding there, what I would like to see if we could request a copy or a page of the plat or the, where this will take place, as was there on the easel there in the church. If we could have that at the next meeting or so, I would appreciate it.
Eric can do that.
It would give us all a very, I totally misunderstood where the alliance was, so that's my request. Thank you, sir.
Evidently, there was a statement in the notice of public hearing that it was east of Interstate forty, and it should have been west of Interstate forty. It's what the area that it's describing is, and so that's what Alderman Holt is referring to. But the map and everything indicated the area all west of forty, but the actual notification said it was east of Interstate forty, so. Alderman Mosley?
I was just going to make an observation. I attended that meeting, and I think it was a good meeting. I think it was an informative meeting. I think Alderman Vaprazan did a good job of hosting that meeting. And I think there was some disappointment. There weren't more residents of that area there, but the ones that were there had some very good questions. And so, a lot was hashed out, some air was cleared, and some things like that, as far as I'm concerned. I know some of the folks are in the audience tonight, just to, I guess, get better informed as to what all is going on. But in my opinion, this kind of looks like a win-win deal. There's no money that would go out on the city's behalf, out of our general fund, to do this. We're trying to just get a grant at this point, is all we're trying to do, is apply for a grant. And if we get it, it would give residents in that area the option of tying on to sewer that would go in, and it would also allow us to better market some of the commercial property over there because it would have sewer. So, unless somebody's got a reason that I need to object to this, I don't know why I would object to it. It sounds reasonable to me, so.
Thank you, Alderman Mosley. Alderman Vaprazan?
Alderman Mosley, to clarify, yes, it is a grant, but yes, there is some money that will be, need to come out of our pockets for this, a percentage as much as five percent. It's our understanding, we don't know the details on that yet. Mr. Neri, would you like to address that?
The folks who are doing this grant application, the mechanics of the submission is Central Arkansas Planning and Development District and Lone Oak, who we've worked with on many other grant applications. And it's my understanding, just like Alderman Vaprazan said, what it amounts to is somewhat of a match for this grant. The amount that we're asking for is just north of four million, five hundred thousand dollars. Now, two things. Number one, we might get nothing. We might get flat turned down. We don't know if we're going to get it or not. Number two, if we do get it, none of us are exactly sure of what that percentage would be. In a similar situation with another city that Central Arkansas Planning and Development District worked with, I believe their grant was just over two million dollars, and it cost that city fifty thousand dollars. Now, you could say, okay, well, let's double that and add a little bit more to it. Maybe, maybe not. I don't know how that's going to work, and nobody can answer that question right now until the state agency makes a decision. Now, I do agree with Alderman Mosley and Alderman Vaprazan. Still, to me, that is a win-win situation, no matter what. If you go back to Mammell Forward, and even if there was no Mammell Forward, common sense will tell you that that area up and down three sixty-five in time, whether I'm here to see it or not, I don't know, is going to develop commercially, and it's going to be a hub. It's going to be a destination. It's on the highway department's plan in time to make Highway three sixty-five four lanes all the way from Conway to forty. And you can see what that can mean to the City of Mammell as far as tax revenues in the future, because obviously, in time, those areas are going to be within the City of Mammell. They will. So, no matter what this match, which is actually, they call it a loan, but you can pay it back the same day, no matter what that turns out to be, to me, that would be a pittance of what the city would have to pay if there wasn't a grant behind that. And now that we have North Little Rock wastewater to help push and guide what they do best. So, that is how I understand it, and keep your fingers crossed, because I think this is a very good deal.
So, five percent would be two hundred and thirty-five thousand of the four point seven, which is still just a fraction of the cost of what we're desiring to do, to see happen up and down that area in the future. And, you know, there's the, I hate the word potential because that just means nothing has happened yet. But this is moving in the right direction. We've already met with Judge Hyde, and he liked the idea. So, this approves here. It'll go before the quorum court, and they'll approve it. And then, we have a deadline of June first for this federal grant, or for this ANRC grant to go forward. So it has to be submitted by then.
All of these are planks within this application process to satisfy what they want us to do in order to be able to turn the grant app in, as Alderman Vaprazan said, by June one, which they extended. Otherwise, it would have been last Friday, so we were glad that they extended it. So, that's what I know about it.
And no funds are being committed at this time.
Absolutely not.
You're just simply saying, let's go into a local agreement with the county to do this project. If there are any funds that have to be spent, a loan has to be taken out. It comes back before this body.
That's correct.
At that time. Then you would know if you've gotten the grant at that time, I think, so.
You would have, absolutely.
There's no obligation to us to even accept it if we get it.
No.
No.
So, and also, from what I understand, there's no strings attached to annexation.
None.
Either the folks over there are not in any way...
Absolutely not.
In any way committing to be annexed.
Strictly voluntary if you want to participate or not.
So, anyway, all right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for the...
City Attorney Norris?
I was just going to reiterate that procedurally, all we're doing is granting the mayor, or all the council would be doing is granting the mayor the thumbs up to enter into a cooperative agreement with the county, which is a prereq to apply for it. And just to correct, I'm not sure this does go to the quorum court. I think the county is treating this just as a contract, to go through the contract routing process, which we could have done, but I know the mayor likes to bring you all involved in decisions like that. So that's where we're at with this.
Thank you. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure whether I should direct this question at Mr. Neri or you or whoever, but if the City of Mammell, if we have some matching funds, some amount, and we're partnering with the county, is the county contributing any money?
No.
They have already extended their limits to other areas of the county, is my understanding. Now, Eric's nodding his head yes out there. They've already done some of these projects in other areas of the county, and so they've already committed everything that they could commit to those, as I understand it, in meeting with Judge Hyde. And that's kind of why we're the, kind of the lead agency or lead government.
Plaski County has already, they fulfilled all what they can go for. They've reached their limit, and so this is kind of left up in the air, so we took the bait and we went for it.
And it does benefit a large commercial tract out in the Morgan area, and which hopefully, with sewer available in those areas, there'll be some other large tracts that are undeveloped, that don't have residents on them, that could be commercial property. And then, hopefully, they would voluntarily annex into the City of Mammell to get the fire protection and public protection from the police department.
All right, thank you.
Did you have any other comments, Alderman Mosley? I know your light was back on, but, okay, all right.
I got them in.
Alderman Holt?
Just one more quick question. We do, we're responsible for the construction of the sewer system, but then after we're done, it's taken over by North Little Rock Sewer, as they are doing now for us.
They'll do the construction.
Do they, who does the construction? And so...
The construction will be done by construction...
They'll run it after we're done with it, then?
That's correct. The construction will be done by a construction company. That project would be bid out to a utility contractor. Now, the inspectors would be the engineers that are on the project, and then probably North Little Rock wastewater would oversee construction of it. And we might have some cursory inspection of it also, but it's not going to be in our jurisdiction as such. So, we don't inspect, technically, we don't inspect sewer lines in the City of Mammell except where there's road crossings at, and Plaski County Road and Bridge would do that, and the State Highway Department, if there's areas that are crossing the state highways. We would only inspect it if it's crossing one of those streets that's in the city limits of Mammell.
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor.
You need a motion?
Do need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty seventeen dash oh seven?
Second.
A motion and second to approve resolution twenty seventeen dash oh seven, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative agreement. Is there any more discussion on that motion? If not, all of them in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Moving on to mayor's comments. I included a letter in your packet from ISO, and ISO stands for Insurance Service Organization. And the very good news that they came in and basically audited Mammell late last year, I believe, early at the start of the year, and effective July one, our classification will go from a three to a two. Now, some insurance companies use that to base their insurance rates off of it, some don't, but it could result in a savings to residential houses, but it definitely will result in some kind of saving for our industrial and bigger commercial-type developments, because that's the ones that insure large buildings and all. And what I do want to say is that this was all done because of some great work that was done by Chief Payne, John Payne, our fire marshal, that had everything ready to go so that when they came in, all the documentation was there, and they were able to look at it and look at it very quickly. Also, Captain Cordell did some things to a truck to make it meet some requirements and did some altering to a truck to make it a squad, is what it's called. Basically, we turned our brush truck into a squad, and that's what the volunteers respond in. And so, that gained us points that we needed to push us over a little threshold there. And so, under Chief Ezell and his complement of firefighters and everybody working together, we were able to accomplish this. And part of it, too, is based on the water system out here. We have a great water system. Everything's looped and tied back in, and we have large water mains and things like that. And so, that all plays into it. It's not just your firefighting capability, it's what your water supply does. And we've always scored real well on the water supply, but we've lacked in a few things. But by moving the station the one mile north or south, and then doing some other things to meet the... And we knew what we needed to do after their last audit, and so we're very proud that we're to a two. And, you know, it'd take a lot to get to a one, but we'll keep striving to get there in, you know, many years from today. Yes, sir, Alderman Saunders?
Mayor, I'm just throwing this out as a matter of information for people. When I was doing, whenever I was doing firefighting, and I assume it's still the same, there was only one fire department in the State of Arkansas that was higher than a two. Now, I don't know if that's still true, but two is a pretty good rating.
It is. I think there's several now. I think a couple more have gotten to ones. I don't know the exact number, but I think there's three, according to our illustrious reporter out there. So there's three. You must have been doing some looking into this, so. Yeah, so there's three cities in Arkansas, I assume, that are at a... Okay. All right, thank you very much. So there you go. So, yeah, so there's only three better than us, then, right? I guess, with the ISO rating, anyway, so.
We're tied for second.
We're tied for second, okay. All right, also, just to let you know, we had a police and fire banquet on Friday night at Mammell Center on the Lake. It was a very good event. We were able to honor our police and firefighters with some awards that they were well-deserving, a lot of life safety awards, and then some awards were given out for nabbing criminals and things like that. So it was a very good event. Congressman Hill was our guest speaker, and so he came out and spoke highly of Mammell. And it was the first venue like, or first event like this, in the venue at the center on the lake, and it was well-received and a very good place to have an assembly like that. So, the banquet tables were put in the...
Pye.
Exercise.
Pye, Pye Room, which is the exercise, the group exercise room. So, very good area, and they served the buffet out in the hallway there, kind of like they did on the grand opening and the VIP reception that they had when they first opened it. So it went really well, and I heard no complaints, so that's good. So that's good news. Just a reminder, Easter egg hunt will be before our next meeting, so that's April the fifteenth at nine AM. There's a packet in your agenda is there, or packet, there's a flyer in your agendas, and it gives you all the information, but there's three age groups. It's a two-minute rush of egg gathering, is what it is, so it's not a hunt. There is no hunt involved in it. It's just scoop them up as fast as you can get to them. And then, the other thing I want to point out is the spring cleanup will start April the seventeenth and go through the twenty-seventh, so Public Works will be real busy during that timeframe, so don't call them with anything else. That's our bulky item pickup, if you're not aware of that. We take most things, but there are some exceptions. They can't take things that have Freon in them and things like that. And they don't take yard waste at that time. So, I mean, they'll pick up yard waste on the regular day, but they can't take yard waste. We can't mix solid waste and yard waste and even just trash. They can't take just general trash, so don't put your trash bags out there. But there's, all the exceptions are listed on that flyer that was in your packet also. And then, just real quickly, at five o'clock today, we did a groundbreaking for a new restaurant coming to Mammell. It was Chick-fil-A. So if you hear that I posed with a cow, I did. So I'm getting it out there right now, before other people beat me to it. There was a Chick-fil-A cow that said eat more chicken at the event. And so, it was a small, just groundbreaking. The owner and his key team were there, and so they didn't want a lot of people. They wanted just a small groundbreaking. But we were able to do it, and so this fall, you should be able to enjoy Chick-fil-A chicken sandwiches, so.
It's good to know. There, I've heard a lot of people, a rumor going around that they weren't coming.
There was a rumor going around that they weren't coming, so I do think it's good that they did the groundbreaking today, so. Yeah, everybody's going, well, they hadn't done anything. What are they waiting on? And, you know, it takes a little while to get everything in order to get a building permit, so. But their building permit hasn't been pulled, and they should be breaking ground soon. I mean, they've already got equipment parked out there, so, yep. All right, next item is planning commission report. That'll be at the next meeting. Any aldermen's comments? Alderman Mosley?
I'm sorry I'm talking so much tonight. We got a, I think everybody got a copy of a letter from a gentleman named Osborne that I don't, he's not exactly in my ward. I think he's actually in North Little Rock. I think the neighborhood he lives in is in North Little Rock. But he was questioning, I guess, what we're doing as far as the Crystal Hill improvements under the two thousand twelve bond issue. Are you familiar with that letter, Mr. Mayor?
I am. I got it last week also. I'm going to respond to him, but the...
I may wait and let you respond.
Well, but I will tell you that that's the... Well, but, but I will tell you that, that's the master, that's the street that's on the master street plan that North Little Rock and Maumell worked with, and it's interesting that he didn't know how wide the street was going to be, because when he developed his condominiums, he made a 24-foot wide half-street, so therefore, it's a 4-lane, 48-foot street. But he constructed half of a 48-foot street when he developed his condominium, so it's interesting that he's saying that Maumell's doing something that we shouldn't be doing.
Okay, we're still doing, though, exactly what we said we'd do.
That's correct, that's correct. That's, if, if you read the letter, it says, I stated it would be a 4, it'd go from a 16-foot roadway to a 48-foot roadway. Well, that's what we're building, we're building a 48-foot roadway, but he talks about this huge 80-foot right-of-way. Well, I never mentioned that was what the right-of-way was, I think he's assuming the 48-foot roadway was the right-of-way, but, I mean, all you got to do is go look at his development on the other side of the road, and he put curb and gutter in and developed a 24-foot wide street.
So, he's, he's made it bigger than it's, the rest of it's going to be, then?
Well, no, no, he, he's made exactly what was required there, which is 48-foot.
Okay, so he.
So, he did half, he did his half on the North Little Rock side.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, and it's the master street plan, that was something that was developed between the city of North Little Rock and the city of Maumell, so that the entire roadway would be the same width through both communities down through there.
And our improvements will go to our city limits?
They will go to our city limit line.
Because he talks about Jeffrey Road, and I thought maybe Jeffrey Road was not at the city limit, so.
It's close to the city limit line.
Okay, but it, it goes past that, and it'll go to the city.
Well, it'll go as far as we can go, and then, but we're going to have to reduce it down to match a 2-lane roadway, so the curb and gutter, we, you know, we can't just abruptly stop and then, and then narrow it down on somebody else's property, or North Rock's property, so it would be narrowed down right before you get to the city limit line.
There will be a little roundabout there, is that?
There, the roundabout would be at Count's Massey and Crystal Hill.
Okay.
Then that's trying to prevent a traffic light from going there in the future, is what we're trying to do there, so, yeah. Yeah, I mean, and, and I don't see the difference between a 4-lane versus his, he wants a 3-lane with a center turn lane. I, I, I grew up on, off Gar Springs Road, I hated center turn lanes, they're called suicide lanes where I come from, so.
Chicken.
Yeah, or chicken lanes, so, I don't like those middle lanes. People kind of do crazy things in those things, they use them for acceleration lanes, deceleration lanes, and just driving in if they feel like it to pass everybody, so.
Okay.
But I am going to address this letter, but I got it like Wednesday of last week, I think, is when I received it.
All right. I did have one other time, I noticed our sales tax receipts are down some from last year, maybe one month it was around, another month it's.
Cities down, counties up.
Yeah, counties up, cities down a little bit. Do we, is there any, do we know?
I blame it on internet sales.
Okay.
I really do, that's, I mean, you're going to hear that from me for, forever, because I, I, you know, I, I just, it's internet sales. I mean, I think that's a lot of it. The more, I mean, you can buy, 5 years ago, and I had this conversation with somebody the other day, 5 years ago, if you'd have told me you could buy a mattress online, I'd have told you you were crazy. But now, you can buy a mattress, they'll deliver it to your house in a box, and you unfold it, and then it grows into this mattress, you know, so, and then you can send it back 100 days later if you don't like it, so, I mean, it's crazy, but, you know, there's, you can buy furniture, you can do everything online now, so.
Okay, that's, that's all I've got. Are we still, oh, I have one other thing here, are we, are we still interviewing for human resources directors?
Oh, we are not interviewing, I've actually made an offer, and I'm waiting to hear back from that individual, so.
Awesome.
Great, thank you, that's all I've got.
I hope I don't do any more interviewing, that's what I'm going to say. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm not so sure that, we'll just have to agree to disagree, I'm not sure it's all internet sales. If you look back historically through 2012, and in most cases, the month of March is lower. Is there some reason for that? I mean, if you look at it.
It's January's collections, so here, here's what I would say, it's right after Christmas. That, that's the best argument I can give, and that's simply just a guess. Your December collections are done in February, so those are typically going to be your highest, because that's December sales, including Christmas purchases and a lot of purchases at the grocery store, hopefully for Christmas meals and things like that.
Well, see, our pattern, there seems to be a pattern here, where in January it's down, February it goes up, and then in March, it comes back down again.
But that's what I'm saying, your February sales are your, your February tax that you're seeing is your sales from December.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, okay.
You collect 2 months late, we collect 2 months late from the state.
Okay, so in March, it's the decrease in January sales.
Yes, yes, yes. The, the, the end of, the retailers don't have to remit to the state till after the month is over, and then the state doesn't remit it to us till the following month.
Okay.
So, so our collections are lagging 2 months behind.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you.
And, and like I say, I can't prove the internet sales, but that's my opinion. All right, anybody else have any aldermen's comments? Mr. City Attorney?
No, sir.
Madam City Clerk?